If we could all stand, please, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one God, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Before I go any farther, just so we have it on the record, our chairman is not here tonight, so the alternate in his place will be Patrick Hooper. We can put that in the record. Fire evacuation announcement. In case of fire, and mostly you know this, but we'll read it anyway. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left and down the stairs and out the back. Or exit the door at the rear of these chambers. In either case, out of the building, walk a safe distance away from the building. Roll call, please, John.
Yes, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Lynda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo is absent. Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Gorillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Hooper.
Here.
And Walter Crizell.
Here.
Also present is the Director of Planning, Laurie Whitten and Matt Davis. Okay, here we go. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, January 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Did we ever get a decision on the public hearing 3085? The motion by Commissioner Hooper was not seated, that he seconded.
So it is my understanding that alternates may make motions, they just may, they cannot vote.
Okay, just making sure.
It does make it a little bit less clear when the alternates do make motions, but it is possible.
Okay, thank you.
The other question I have, Laurie, if I could. And the January 11th meeting, we have me marked down as approving the December 21st minutes. And since I wasn't here, nor was I on the board, I don't think I did that. I think I abstained. I thought I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, but if we could just straighten that out.
The recording secretary will look into that.
Okay, thank you.
So it's January 11th.
Does that mean we have to table the minutes, or can we approve them? Okay. Okay. Okay, can we call a vote? The motion was made to approve the minutes, can we call a vote, please, John?
Raise your hands if you want.
All right, just show a hand.
Show a hand. Aye.
Unanimous?
I'm sorry, could I just get who got the, who made the motion and seconded it?
I seconded it.
Walter and, okay, Ken.
Next item on the agenda is the 25th meeting, the minutes of the 25th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the 25th.
Second.
I have an item on the 25th, or the, yeah, January 25th meetings. With respect to the roll call and the present, there's, none of the alternates are listed.
Good point.
Don't know why that is.
Mr. Chair. Also, on, where was it? I know it's, on 13, New Business, 1926. The representatives for the applicants, we don't have their last names. And one of them was Matt, and so we've got a Matt, which is a staff person, and we have this Matt. That we don't know who he is. And then, and that was on page three. And then on page four, second paragraph, one, two, three, four, fifth line, Matthew is misspelt. Those are it.
Any other questions or concerns?
Just one, and I'm going to refer to the staff. We're no longer commissioners, we're just first and last names in our minutes. Every one of us just show up as first and last names, we're not commissioners in these, so just.
Okay.
Something new, I know she's new.
Well, that and, and just everything, it's, with the new system, it kind of pulls names in.
Oh, okay.
We kind of have to remember to fill in the blanks, so.
Oh, so it's already in, and I can go on and just pull it?
I don't think it's live. We're still working on our end to get it right.
I was excited for you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve. We can assume, Laurie, that these corrections will be made, that everybody brought up.
Correct, they'll be in the minutes for today.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Town Attorney Report, do we have anything? Oh, that's right, I did see that. I did see that. Now, Laurie or Matt, any comments on the Town Attorney's Report?
Nope.
Any questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to accept the Town Attorney's Report.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Zoning enforcement officers report, anything?
No report this evening.
Okay. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience here that would like to address the commission on any zoning issues or planning issues that are not on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on. Bond releases?
None this evening.
None. Authorization for administrative approvals, I didn't see anything about that either.
Not this evening.
Director of Planning Report.
Okay, we've been very busy with some things, you know, obviously planning related, but a lot of ART-related stuff, so we've been busy behind the scenes. Last meeting, Matt and I brought up the CROG, the Capital Region Council of Governments, typology study and nomenclature. Matt has been on the phone with CROG more than I, but I think the crux of it is that they don't, they're not even sure they're going to use this.
Okay.
And we're not, we haven't gotten any real confirmation as to if they were going to use it, what they would use it for. So at this time, rather than go through the minutia of all this, we almost would like to have the commission agree that they send a letter to CROG, basically commenting that until they have more definitions, that we don't want to support this. And I didn't know if Matt wanted to say anything else beyond that.
No, it captures it, there's a draft motion that we, I handed out. So that if you find that suitable and appropriate, we'd like to have you vote on that, and then we'll forward that off to the staffing.
Okay, we'll take a look at that during New Business for, if that makes sense, or?
Whatever your preference.
You could do it now or later, it's not necessarily an order thing. I mean, since we're discussing it.
Okay.
Or if you want to discuss it now.
Aye.
That's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me read the motion and.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission is not in favor at this time for the additional, excuse me, addition of typologies into the 2024 Regional Plan as the current draft categories do not correspond well with the Enfield's existing land uses, and given the lack of clarity in terms of how these typologies will be made used in guiding regional policy and related discussions or decisions.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All of, no, go ahead, Christian.
Yeah. I mean, I do support it as it's written, but I'm just thinking of what if CROG does go ahead despite us not supporting it? It does mention about, you know, us not agreeing how it describes Enfield's existing land use, but would they take that into consideration into updating it? Like, I don't, I guess to put it a different way, I don't want CROG to see this and be like, oh, they don't agree, or they don't want it, so we'll just ignore what they have to say. Does that, does that make sense? And I guess, I guess that's for everybody.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have a pretty good relationship with the CROG staff, we know their staff pretty well, we've worked with them for many, many years, and I cannot imagine that they would, you know, endorse doing something like that. So we're, we're in communication throughout the process with them, and this, this really is kind of a to-be-continued kind of a category, more than anything else. So I would, I would suspect that if they wanted to go forward with it, at the very least, they would consider, A, the categories and how they're described, and then B, how they're mapped in the town. How they choose to use them or not use them in terms of policy decisions, that's really up to the regional. And we do have a representative that attends, or is appointed to at least, the regional planning agency, so we should have some.
Yes, Joan and Frank.
We should have some continuity there as well, so we don't really have any concerns.
Okay, yes, as long as staff is comfortable with it, then I'm good.
Just real quickly, I think that, following up with Matt said, I don't think that they would even agree to put this in until they came back to us to say, okay, what do we, how can we fix this, so.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have one.
Okay.
Yeah. Would it behoove us to add a sentence to this motion stating that Enfield Planning and Zoning is perfectly willing to continue discussions on this matter as revisions occur, or something like that?
Certainly. Oh, sorry, certainly, yeah, I mean.
Okay. So I would, I would, I would move to amend the motion to state Enfield Planning and Zoning is willing to continue discussions on this matter as, as future changes occur. Second.
Anything, any comments on that? Okay, if we could vote on the amendment, please. All in favor?
Aye.
The amendment passes. Now, if we could vote on the motion.
Is it going to be a roll?
Yeah.
Is there going to be a roll?
I would think so.
I would think so.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Gorillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Karen Blanche.
Four.
John Petronella is four, and Patrick Hooper.
Four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any outside correspondence? Any Commissioner correspondence? Hearing none, we're rolling right along. All right, to the continued public hearings, if you could.
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their regular meeting on Thursday, January, excuse me, February 8th at 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 8:20, Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing number 3084, 809 Enfield Street and Six Park Avenue, application for special use permit to expand outdoor display and non-conforming coverage per Section 5.2 and 3.40.1. D. GJWSJ LLC, applicant-owner, map 29, lots 71 through 72, BG Zone.
Okay. I assume you guys are ready to go, and you're the applicants. If we could state your name, please, and?
Sure, for the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates, One Shoaham Road, East Windsor, and with me is?
Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Rome from Gary Rome Kia, right across the street.
Okay.
Well, thank you for hearing our application this evening. We are proposing improvements to the Gary Rome car dealership across the street, as Gary mentioned. It's a property located on the southeast corner of Enfield Street, Route 5, and Park Avenue, and you can see on the location map there. Currently, on the site, existing condition plan shows two parcels. The larger parcel is where the car dealership is located. The building is in the front of the parcel. This building was built back in the 1920s, the pavement has been there for a long time, and we're not proposing to change anything with regard to the existing building. But they recently purchased this parcel, Six Park Avenue, which has a residential house on it and a driveway, and proposing to remove that so that we can expand the parking for the dealership. It's a small lot, there's not a lot of parking on this, this site, and so any increase that we can get is going to be helpful for the success of the business. This, this use, this application also is requesting a special use approval under your Section 3.40.1. D., which allows you to increase the nonconformity of an existing lot. Now, as mentioned, this existing lot at 809 is not conforming in a number of ways. The building is too close to the street. Here's the building line cutting across the front of the, of the building. It's not conforming with regard to this side yard setback here. It's not, not conforming with regard to impervious coverage and pretty much everything. But this is, we're not changing that, but by taking this parcel and merging it with the other one, we're reducing the nonconformities of this lot. This lot is, although it's got a residential house on it, is already zoned business general. So the anticipation, I think, in assigning it that zone was that this would eventually happen, because a BG zone is meant for business, not for residential. So, so here we are, doing what I think was anticipated would eventually happen. And by merging these two parcels, we are eliminating some nonconformities, I think overall making it better. However, this parcel two, as we're calling it, is conforming with regard to impervious coverage. So by merging it with a parcel that's not, not conforming to impervious coverage, we're, we're creating, increasing a nonconformity in a sense on, on that parcel. And so under Section 3.40.1. D., you have the authority through a special permit to allow that, that, and in this case, we feel that it's, it meets the criteria for which you are permitted to do that, namely that it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and we believe that's the case because by doing this, we are decreasing nonconformities overall, which is one of your goals, to, to eliminate nonconformities. And that's one of the things this does, doesn't eliminate all of the nonconformities, but it makes it better. The, it's also in harmony with, with the neighborhood because it's, it's really just closing out what is, what should be like a block around this whole thing. So it's kind of, it's the missing piece in this block, and just kind of combining it just makes sense. The zoning's already set up for it, and, and I think, so for a number of reasons, it seems to be the right thing. It mirrors what's across the street at 799. Gary Rome has a, has a parking lot on the other side of Park Avenue, and so it's consistent with the neighborhood to, to do something like this. We did mention just briefly, there is an environmental, environmental land use restriction on this property because of past contamination, not something that Gary Rome did, but something that he inherited when he bought the property. And what we're proposing is not in conflict with that at all, so this is consistent with that. With regard to landscape, if I move down to the site plan, see what we're proposing to do is to expand the parking into that parcel two and install a planted buffer around the perimeter, so along Park Avenue, our bividy plantings, and a solid fence. Your regulations for buffers that are across the street and adjacent to residential districts require buffers of 25 and 35 feet. We're proposing a 10-foot buffer, and your regulation, Section 10.20.2, allows you to modify the buffer requirements when, in your opinion, the properties are adequately protected or sufficiently protected. And so one thing we did is we reached out to the nearest butter, and we got a letter of support from them. They saw what we were proposing, they agreed that they were sufficiently protected. So if you're wondering how do the butters feel, they feel that this is sufficiently protected. In addition, your, your regulations don't require fences, and we're providing a solid fence. Your regulations don't require a solid, continuous, evergreen planting, but we're providing a solid, continuous, evergreen planting. So while it is narrower, we are providing some things in addition that are not specifically required by the buffer. So with those things in mind, we feel that, that you have proper grounds to, to grant that modification of the landscaping, and so with this, with approving the application, you would be approving those modifications. We're also proposing some, some lighting. Truck turning movement, when we met with staff, fire department said, how are we going to get in and out of here? We want to make sure that our trucks can get in and out. And I said, well, what size truck? They said, we want our biggest truck to be able to get in and out of there. So it's only a one-story building, but I guess you never know what trucks available, and they want to have all, all options available. So we did this diagram to show what would need to happen. We had to eliminate some parking spaces to make that work, but in order to accommodate them, we did limit the parking as, as necessary. So our lighting photometric plan, proposing three new light poles, two along the east boundary and one on the Park Ave boundary. And what these little dots show, it's a little hard to read at this, at this scale, we could zoom in, is that at the property lines, there are zero-foot candles, that means no light spillage. The only, yeah, they're, they're full cutoff fixtures, downward lit, not shining out. I think staff mentioned something about a, some shields on the lights to further protect the residential properties, and, and we are in agreement with that. If I, if I go back here, let's see. Here's the lighting spec. Scroll down here, see this, that's what an external shield looks like. It's this little fins that are put on the back and the side that just provide additional protection from the, any spillage. So these don't even reflect that additional measure, but we're willing to submit to that condition, that the, that the house shields be installed on the, on the poles. So that's the lighting. And regard to parking for the, the site, maybe I'll use this one because it's a little, little less, less busy here. Because we're adding more outdoor display area, your regulation requires us to have more parking spaces as well, so to accommodate that, we're going to designate some of these ones in the middle as, as parking spaces for customers and employees. And so it's a combination of, of inventory parking and customer and employee parking. We're also adding another accessible parking space in the back of the building, will allow employees with disabilities to, to have, to have convenient access to the, to the rear of the building. So in doing so, we're fully compliant with your zoning regulations, not requesting any, any modifications there. So this is a special permit application because car, motor vehicle sales with associated service are a special use in this BG zone. We feel we meet the special permit criteria as well. This is a business that's been here for a while. It has a track record proving that it, that it's compatible with the neighborhood. We're not really changing anything, just squaring off the site, so there's not a big expansion. This is, I think, consistent and in keeping with, with, with the neighborhood. I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this, this too, but across the street, show you. Across the street. As built. This was a as-built plan we did back in 2012. You see, the same type of buffer that we're requesting now is what was put in, in back in 2012. So, so again, we're being consistent with the neighborhood with this type of buffer plant, and you can see the, the roll. This one doesn't even have a fence, but we are proposing a fence in addition to what is across the street, so. So I, I think that, just, I guess in regard to traffic, we don't see any, really any significant traffic increase with a few more vehicles for inventory, hopefully some increase in sales, a few more trips, so would be, would be the, the goal, but not, not a big change to, to the site. There is a curb cut currently on Park Ave, and we're proposing to use that for construction access, but then to close it off. So there'll be no traffic going onto the residential street. Everything will be on, on Route 5 as it, as it is now. So no changes really in traffic patterns, no significant increase in traffic, and lighting's going to be controlled, and we'll be providing, I think, an adequate buffer. Right now, residents across the street can look across at the open yard and see just a chain-linked fence. So with this planting, so I think will be, from that perspective, even an improvement. So that's our presentation. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Gary?
No, I just, you know, well, sure. Thank you very much for, for listening, and I want to improve the neighborhood and continue to be a good neighbor. We also, one thing that you didn't mention, which is the added, the lighting in the back is going to add security, because we've had some issues over time where a few wheels were stolen and a few vehicles were vandalized back there. So this additional lighting will help provide some security that we need back there as well.
So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them, or we can hear what staff has to say.
Okay. Would the staff like to comment on this before we open it up to the commission for questions?
The only, the only thing, Mr. Chairman, that we would say is you have the report from staff. Hopefully you had a chance to look at it. We're happy to answer any questions, whether if you see the need. It's, again, it's a fairly simple application from our perspective.
Okay.
You have some decisions to make in terms of the buffers and those types of things. But I, I think maybe I defer to you and the members and let you ask your questions first.
Okay. Any questions by the Commissioners? Lynda?
Hi, Dana. Actually, to Dana and to the staff through the chairman, is there a way to make this a little bit more, not, more conforming? And also, this is a two-part question. The parking right behind the building. When I was over there today, I saw one of those containers, a shipping containers. Is those spots going to be more additional shipping containers that are going to be added to those additional spots?
That's not the plan, we're not planning on adding any additional containers. In fact, we'll just straighten everything out and make it more streamlined.
And can this become more, because regulation says we can't, we can, on special occasions, make something, extend nonconforming, but can we make this site more conforming than it, than it is right now?
By eliminating the storage containers, is that what you're asking?
Whatever you need to do, I'm just asking, I'm throwing that out.
Yeah, I think we are making the site more conforming in numerous ways. We're eliminating a side yard setback that's not conforming by merging the lots where the residential lot is not conforming with regard to area because it really was a residential lot. It wasn't really sized for the Business General Zone. So we're cleaning up, I think, some inconsistencies by the fact that these are currently separate parcels and by merging them, it's, I think, heading in the right direction. So if there's any other specific things you'd like to see, we can certainly discuss them. We think we're proposing something that does reduce nonconformities.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Tim?
Yes, I had a question concerning the southeast area where you're kind of encroaching on the Troyano properties.
Yes.
Okay. And I wasn't sure if, are they aware of it and are they in favor of that particular?
They haven't, I don't know if they're aware of it or not. I know they're, they've been doing some work with this property. I think they have some plans for this property. But the, if they ask us to remove them, then we'd have to do that.
Yeah, I know. I think I read somewhere that it helps improve the drainage and things like that. But since you had the letter from the neighbor, from the abutter, I'm just assuming you may have had some kind of...
Yeah, I mean, you have a relationship with the Troyano's.
Yeah, I can answer that.
I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with this.
Yeah, I've talked to Frank and we're very friendly neighbors on the other side as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any?
Not really a question, just to say the staff was okay. I personally looked at it and squaring it off is really a no-brainer. Makes a lot of sense to me. You didn't have any issues with them, with me reading it. The buffers, thank you. You're getting to know me pretty well, Mr. Steele. That's awesome. The Arbevitae is definitely key, definitely key on both sides. I personally, I've been there, they've been around forever, I've seen this. This is just the smartest thing to do right now, in my opinion. I'm good with it.
Anyone else? Question?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely think it's up to interpretation in terms of harmony with the neighboring uses, the residential area especially, but I understand, you know, the intent of the Business General Zone it's in, it is clear. So I understand. I don't agree, but I understand where you're coming from. But I did have a question for you with the fence. Can you just maybe trace on the screen the fence, the fence line, where the fence is running?
Everywhere where you see the plantings is fence also.
And which side is the fence on? So will the planting be faced out towards the neighbors?
Yes. It'll be, the neighbors will see the plantings and the fence will be behind the plantings.
Great, thank you.
And is that...
Anyone else?
Is that fence, is it chain link? Is it solid?
Solid.
Vinyl, solid fence.
Perfect. Great.
Anyone else?
There's a picture of it.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before this public Going once? Going twice? Gone. Okay. Nobody else has any questions? We can entertain. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
All those in favor of closing the hearing? All right, you got them? All right, unanimous.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the...
That was Ken and Joe, right?
Ken and Joe? Is that right? Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Close it up. All right.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3084, application for special permit and site plan modification to expand relocate nonconformity to allow auto sales service on 6th Park Avenue with inventory, storage, display property to be combined with 809 Anfield Street, GJWSJ LLC, applicant owner Dana Steele, PE, applicant's representative, MAP 29, lot 71 and 72, BG zone, and Anfield Street design overlay per the reference plans, reports, and application materials listed herein with the following 28 modifications and conditions of approval.
Second.
Call a roll, Mr. Secretary.
Yes. Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Vincent Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Patrick Cooper.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Motion passed.
Congratulations.
We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up is...
On the agenda is public hearing 3806.
The Anfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their regular meeting on Thursday, February 8, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Anfield Street, Anfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing number 308644 Laughlin Road, application for special use permit for an accessory apartment per section 4.50.10, Ace Carpentry LLC, applicant Steve and Kellyanne Cardinal, owner MAP 106, lot 5, R44 zone.
Okay, I see you're sitting here, so could you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Greg Boswell, it's 31 Moody Road.
Okay. Board's yours.
So we have, basically the homeowner's mother's going to be moving up from Florida, so she's planning on moving in at that address. So we're going to add an in-law apartment to the left side of the garage, so it's going to basically bump out on the left side into the back of the garage, just going to be basically like a one-room apartment with a kitchen and a bath. So it's kind of, just as far as we're going with that, we're not really touching the main house.
Linda?
Yeah, I do. How does this in-law apartment integrate back into the house later on? It seems like you have to go into the garage and then re-enter? Or is it...
Yeah.
Because part of the regulations is it has to be reintegrated into the house and this kind of looks like a house behind a house.
Yeah, it does. I mean, so they were thinking about, so the kitchen butts the backside of that garage wall.
Uh huh.
So they were thinking if they ever do use that, they're going to expand the house. So basically that wall between, if you look at the in-law kitchen, where basically where the, I want to say the stove's on that side, that's going to get knocked out.
It's very small and...
On the print there?
Yeah. I mean, we only got this.
Oh, they didn't give you the big one? Okay. Well, you only gave one big one, yeah. Yeah, so basically if they do, they're going to either take that wall down and basically extend that main house into that area. So they don't know, I'm assuming, whether, we were talking, that once, if the mother-in-law ever gets out of there, they're basically going to be first floor living because there's no bedrooms on the first floor right now. So that's kind of what they're planning on.
All right. And you're adding a garage also?
Yeah, one bay to the left of the existing garage.
All right. I just was wondering how this would reintegrate into this house.
That's the talks, I mean...
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did have a question.
Okay, Ken?
Mr. Chair, yeah. On page two of the input that we got on item B, number three, it says condition of approval. Is that actually listed as, I didn't go back and check, as a condition of approval? This is the one where the applicant shall present an affidavit to the town swearing or testing that the owner will continue to reside on the premises and so on, so...
Mr. Chair, through the chair, yes, number seven. So every two years they have to reapply?
Yeah, I see enough, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from staff?
The only thing I could say is that they meet or exceed the minimum requirements. We did look to make sure that this was not going to be a Balkan area issue as far as like coverage and setbacks and things like that, so that's all set. And you did not have a final comment from health on here and they did have a positive referral, or not a positive referral, but on Open Gov, they said no concerns.
Okay. Walter?
So am I assuming the only entrance to that addition is through the garage?
Well, there's a, well, unless it's the backs, there's a slider on the back.
Slider on the back, yeah. But from the front, that's the only entrance into that.
There's a side, going to be a side door in the garage and then obviously if you pull your car in, you can walk through, there's going to be an opening.
Side door in the garage, okay, got it.
Yeah. Then there's also going to be an opening between the old garage wall, so you'd be able to walk through that and get into the main entrance.
They could need staff approval, okay.
Okay. You're all set? Any other questions? Okay, if you're all set, I'll ask if anyone here wants to speak in favor or against, anybody want to talk about this public hearing? Obviously not. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Show move.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, concerns? Yeah, question?
I just want to add, I hope that going forward, when we review our regulations, we can definitely take a keen eye to our accessory apartment regulations. I think that's the plan from what we've heard from staff. But we just want to kind of make it a little easier for residents to be able to use their homes as homes. You know, I'm not particularly comfortable about regulating, you know, who lives in a home, you know? Our regulations do, which, I think our regulations are the bare minimum of state law, if I recall. So I hope we get more flexible and maybe kind of revisit the part about, you know, having them reaffirm that, you know, they're related by blood, still alive every two years. Honestly, it's kind of, it's pretty inhumane, in my opinion.
Okay.
But I just want to add that there, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? We have a motion on the floor to, can we have a motion on the floor to approve the public hearing?
To close. The motion is to close the public hearing, I think.
We did that.
We did that, so...
Ken and Walter made that motion and seconded.
Yep.
So we did not take the...
We did not take the vote.
The vote, that's right.
I did not, I did not make the vote, I did not.
Oh, so your voices are very similar. So is Joe.
Oh, is Joe?
I'm not voting because I'm not.
Okay.
All those in favor, close the public hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve public hearing number 308644 Laughlin Road, application for special use permit to allow accessory apartment in the existing dwelling, Ace Carpentry LLC, applicant Steve and Kellyanne Cardinal, owners MAP 106, lot 5, R44 zone with the following 24 conditions of approval and according to the below referenced plans.
Second.
Comments, concerns? Roll, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Vincent Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Patrick Cooper.
Four.
And John Petronella's four.
Have a good day.
Okay, good luck.
We don't have any new public hearings. Old business, new business. Site plan review, 1928.
Site plan review, 1928, 120 Post Road, application for a site plan review for the installation of a ground-mounted solar system and carport array, Green Earth Roofing Solutions LLC, applicant Precision Technologies Inc., owner MAP 047, lot 0045, I-1 zone.
If you'd state your name and address.
Laura Sakurka, T North Road.
Okay.
Please try to speak into the microphone.
Oh. Laura Sakurka, T North Road. There you go.
Chris Sakurka, Solar and Soil, 208 Shaker Road, Long Meadow Mass.
Okay. Go ahead, if you've got something you'd like to say.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to present for the approval, site plan approval and planning and zoning in the step towards being able to submit building and electrical permits. This system is located at PTR on 120 Post Road, Anfield, and it's a small ground mount array that will provide energy for PTR's building use. There are seven ground mount arrays that make up a 299 KW DC photovoltaic system, which is a small system presently in the state of Connecticut with the non-residential ever source program. These seven arrays will be mounted on the north lawn between the existing building and the existing parking lot. There will be a 16.5 KW carport array that will be installed in the lower northeast corner of the parking lot and will serve the covered parking for the four parking spaces dedicated to the two electric vehicle car charging stations that will be installed at that location. The charging stations will be open and available to the public 24/7 per requirements of the Connecticut program. Do you know how to go to the next one? Okay, oops, now you got to go back, right there. This is an overhead view of the location. You can see the PTR facility in the most north of the picture and the lawn that will host the small ground mount system will be located between the sidewalk area south of the building and the parking area north of the parking lot that you see. This is a aerial of the design system with the location of the arrays and the dimensions, although I can't read the dimensions from here, Laura.
They're in the...
They're in the site plan. The 299 KW ground mount solar system will offset PTR's annual electrical usage by approximately 46%, significantly... This is a aerial of the design system with the location of the arrays and the dimensions, although I can't read the dimensions from here, Laura.
They're in the, yeah.
They're in the site plan. The 299 KW ground mount solar system will offset PTR's annual electrical usage by approximately 46%, significantly reducing their internal electricity cost. All ground mount generation will be consumed on-site by the existing facilities. None of this power is going offsite. The 16.5 KW carport solar system will serve to offset a small percentage of the electrical usage that will be consumed by the level three car charging stations that are, that are going to be installed as part of the carport system. Oops, you left out the last one, sorry. I guess, I guess I said that, I apologize. Okay. Question that was asked of GE Roofing Solutions was in terms of wanting to ensure that it had proper operations and maintenance of the system, you know, during the many years that the system will be operational. Green Earth Roofing Solutions will provide the measurement and verification services for both the ground mount system and the carport system through a daily, weekly, monthly system monitoring to ensure that systems are operational. Green Earth will also install vegetation management underneath each of the ground mount arrays to satisfy the Enfield fire code requirements. The vegetation management will be essentially landscaping stone under the array and PTR's landscaping contractor, contractor will maintain the lawns around the ground mount perimeters in between, in between the individual arrays. This is a, just to give an indication of essentially what you'll be, what will be installed, this is a system that GE Roofing Solutions installed at TransTech in Ellington, Connecticut to, as part of the Connecticut Small Program. And that's on the halfway picture that you see on your left-hand side. On the right-hand side will be the protective underbelly, if you will, of the, of the system to, to provide just an added layer of protection. I can't read that, but it's.
This is the draining memo provided by Russo and Associates.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is the overall site plan that Russo and Associates created for, for this project. And I don't know if you have any questions about that, and I'm not the person, but he's the person that could answer those. This, this cutaway is showing the earth attachments for the arrays. The arrays will be, the framework, if you will, or the structure of the array will be galvanized steel, right? So steel that does not have the ability to rust, you know, over its installation period. And the depth, Laura, can you have, do you have any, where I can look at it? Because I can't possibly read that. So the three and a half inch OD diameter, Schedule 40, galvanized steel pipe will be embedded in a two-foot diameter concrete footing, which is four, four feet in depth from grade, nominal depth from grade. And what I mean by that is if there's a slight contour, you know, there might be one at four feet, there might be one at four feet, two inches, right? So there's, it's, it's a nominal depth, but generally at that four-foot depth. Can I have the carport? So the next print is just for the carport? The next print is print from Rinaldi Engineering, Charlie Rinaldi. And this is just for those four parking spots that will be utilized when anybody wants to charge their vehicle with the two portals. It was important to PTR to ensure that if somebody decides to use those charging things that they not be exposed to weather conditions or snow or ice, you know, and have a possible slippage situation. So you have a four-spot carport area that will have a metal roof over the carport with gutters and downspouts going into the water management system and just providing like a very, you know, safe, easy, convenient type of charging opportunity. The next, this slide is for the solar modules that will be utilized for that, for, for the, both the carport system, can I have the, could she? And the wattage. So the, today, the wattage of solar panels has grown over time, you know. I was here many years ago for a solar project and I think we were using 210 watt modules and now they're.
550?
550 watts. So those are the modules that will be utilized for both the ground mount system and the And that's, that's the end, if anybody has any questions.
Anyone have questions? Linda?
I always have questions. I'm glad that this company is thinking about solar, but my question is, is why they're not mounting them as carports in their parking lot for all cars? So, and we had another project a few years back that did a similar thing. They used the solar panels as carports, kept the weather off of their employees' cars, which was kind of nice, it was a plus for them. And then you also are removing 10 trees that are mature. Are they going to be replaced somewhere on the property?
They, they can be.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the trees, I think, that are being removed. Is that Russo? Take question.
Can you pull up the site plan?
Yeah.
Where you have it.
It's not on Dana.
Dana Steele with JR Russo. Yeah, there's, we're showing some, some evergreen trees being removed, two, six of them and, and another deciduous tree, oh, there's a couple more. Couple of large ones, 30-inch maple, 18-inch maple, 24-inch evergreen. So there are some trees that are providing too much shade for the solar panels, in order to, sun to get to the solar panels, that we have to clear, clear them. So if you want to see them replaced, perhaps along the, the northern boundary of the parking lot would be a good place.
Well, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm gonna redesign your little design. If you had taken these, some of these panels and put them on the back of your parking lot, like a carport, you wouldn't have to remove those.
Sure. Is that, is that a cost difference to do that?
I don't know.
Is that the issue?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm not trying to make you charge people millions more, but I'm just looking at this and seeing that you're take, you've got this impervious surface that could be used for these panels and now we're putting them in a green area.
I think I did that carport project.
I think you did.
That, that was.
Yeah, USA.
USA.
Holling.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the issue there was we had to make sure that the carports were far enough away for the fire department if they had to get up there. The, we, we can probably just, we can probably just alter that a little bit or remove just three of those trees instead of the, the number that is put out there. Is it possible that I ask the electrical expert?
Sure, I mean.
Matt?
Come on up, that'd be great.
And I'm just wondering, because the trees that might be by the carport may be a requirement from Eversource?
Matt Messick from Green Earth Roofing, the electrician. So those trees actually have to be removed to accommodate Eversource and their new transformer for the EV service.
Okay.
So they want those removed so they can set a line truck and work on the transformer.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
So we don't have the ability to leave those trees?
In the current location, no.
All right. Thank you. I have one more, well, two questions to the staff, through the chair. On condition eight, where it says absence of notice and then the town would remove it for whatever reason, the company went out of business and it was abandoned, these solar, that the town would wait a year to remove the solar panels? I would rather see something like six months. I mean.
This was excerpted word for word, verbatim from your regs, so.
Okay, all right.
You know, I don't disagree with you, but this is right out of the regs.
Right. And one more thing, because this is kind of not that close to 91, but with the car accidents that happen and the parts that go flying, God only knows, you know? One of the car parts go flying off of the highway, hits one of these, it cracks, it leaks, whatever. Could we require an inspection, like a yearly inspection, to make sure that they're not being, that they're not damaged and by the company, not by us, the town? I'm just asking. Go ahead.
If I can offer this, so GE Roofing Solutions does inspections even greater than on a, on an annual basis?
No, okay.
For, for a project of this type?
All right, thank you. All right, those are my questions. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah. Are the, are the, is the solar panel array fenced in? I don't notice a fence on the diagram.
It is, it is not.
Okay, is there, is there a need to have it fenced in?
There is not a need to have it, to have it fenced in jurisdictionally. What we see a lot of times is there's a request for there to be a fabric barrier on the underbelly.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was just curious. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Christian?
Yeah, I had a few things, but I'll start going off Commissioner DeGray's comment, because that was what stood out to me was that it, I, I get what you're doing with the carport array, but it, putting it in the corner of the lot, but I'm wondering if you would consider just doing a straight shot, because I mean, you're, you're running a lot of extra underground wire as well, so, I mean, I wonder if there's a potential for you to kind of double dip and preserve those existing trees and just have a shorter run to the parking lot for the carport, if that's, if that was a consideration? Was that a consideration?
The carport is an independent service.
So the, the carport and the EV is totally independent of the building? It's a whole new electrical service? And that's per the request of Eversource to have that spot, is that their new, their new utility transformer?
To have it at the, but, but you're running underground wire from the interior of the property, right? It's not, it's not coming from the road.
No, the feed is actually coming off of Phoenix Avenue and following their parking lot into that corner of that carport.
Yeah, that's not identified on the site plan, unless I'm misreading it right. I mean, it shows, it shows the underground wire coming from the east side of the solar arrays.
So Dana Steele, JR Russo, the, the carport has a conduit that's running along the west side of the detention basin, so a straight shot would have to go right through the detention basin. So I don't recommend that, having the conduits go through the.
So what is the, what is the, the underground feed coming from? So it runs, it runs north along the east side of the solar arrays? Runs north up to the parking lot and then runs?
Yeah, both of those runs are going, one's going to the carport, there's two of them, right?
Correct.
One's going to the carport, the other is going to the, the arrays.
Okay.
The ground mounted arrays. So there's, there's, there's one trench for two, two conduits and then they split. One goes to the east and one goes to the west.
Right. So what I was saying is that what if you didn't go west from there? No, didn't go east, sorry.
You mean, you mean move the carport so that it's?
So it would not be at the corner, so it would, it would be in the middle of the lot, the middle of the lot.
Is there any reason that you couldn't do that?
So I mean, like, like I understand, like aesthetically, sure, it may be nicer in the corner, but I'm saying you could, you could preserve those tree, those mature trees.
Yeah, we could, we could move the carport if need be.
I mean, I don't know that we can require them, but I think that's.
If, if you move the carport, then those trees could stay?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know how we do that.
Was this, did the owner want them in those locations? Was there a concern about?
Hold on a sec, I think, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Eversource is the party that you met with and identified where they wanted to put their equipment?
Yes, so they control, the transformer should be on the, the site plan.
It is.
Yes. So obviously shorter conduit, just for the, shorter conduit, shorter wiring for that EV.
That would be beneficial for you, right?
Correct.
I mean, you'd still have to run from the transformer, but there would be still some, some savings.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would propose if, if we could get that in there somewhere, it seems like they're willing. I don't know exactly how we write that in, but.
Are, are you able to speak for the owner of the project?
No.
Okay, so. Okay, so what he's saying is he could do it.
Right.
We don't know whether the owner is in agreement with it.
Right.
So.
So PTR is the, it's an international company. And to the best of my knowledge, you know, I have, I've never spoken to the director that comes over here from Germany. I speak to the management team, you know, and those are just very few minutes. But I know that PTR, that's the area that they approved.
Could we perhaps put a condition in that the applicant can work with staff to determine the final location of the carport array?
If the group here thinks it's appropriate, we can certainly try that. It's not anything that has myself all worked up. We're getting rid of the trees to take care of solar energy, which is kind of stands for itself.
Right. This would allow us to pursue.
I'm concerned that the, we're talking to an electrician who knows his stuff, I'm sure, and he says, yes, we can move it. Well, he can come into my house and look in an electrical box and say, yeah, we can move that. I might not agree with it. And that's my concern, is that, does the management of the company, even the management here, agree we can do whatever the heck we want? I don't know.
Well, I, the, this is the person who's the owner. Is it permissible? I think what Christian is asking is can the carport be moved closer to that center blockway?
Right, so it was more immediately north of the arrays, the proposed arrays.
You would want it.
Hi, Taylor Sukirka, Green Earth Roofing Solutions. Theoretically, yes, we could move it towards the center of the parking lot. That is not something that PTR has expressed wanting. No matter where you put the carport structure on that southern line of parking spaces, trees are going to have to be removed because of the shading that it's going to cast on the carport. Roofing Solutions has no problem for the three trees that would be cut down for the carport to plant three trees elsewhere on the property to keep a balance of that. But once you move them over, and then you do take into the cost consideration of coming off the transformer, in addition to the way that PTR operates their business, they're not going to want to have their deliveries and their employee parking compromising that, especially since that is the most out of the way for the employees, because those parking spots have to be available to the public, and it cannot interfere with their business operations and their employee parking.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate that explanation. Yeah. I mean, it does sound at least that the applicant is willing to address the true replacement. So I do propose that we at least put a condition in for that.
Okay.
I did have, just a quick question. I was just curious, why does the southwestern array only have 76 modules? Just curious about that.
So when we were building out the system based on the usage, obviously, we were, we were trying to balance based on like the contours of the land and what was there. As you'll see, the most northern of the right has 68 modules that again, just fits in with the contours of the property.
Okay, makes sense. And as far as Commissioner DeGray's comment, I do get what you're saying about the carport. But at the same time, definitely a shame to lose a couple trees. Luckily, it's not too many here. But the lawn itself, lawns are not particularly ecologically beneficial, so we're not really losing much valuable green space there. So the trees, yes, but, you know, at least we'll try to address it to degree. Thanks.
Walter?
I think it goes back to that the carport is there for the public to use.
Yes.
And it's out of the way from the employees or from any truck parking or anything people can pull in right there, use it, and then pull out. And it's, and that's what I think, that's why they put it over there. I don't believe it's used for their company employees, it's more for public, so.
The Eversource program that provides subsidy as a condition must be, in order to apply and receive a subsidy, it must be available to the public 24/7.
Yeah, and I don't think you want public people parking right by your sidewalk here or wherever. You know, you want them out of the way.
Or would the public probably prefer that? They'd want to be able to come right in and have it close as possible.
You don't want employees, you don't want cars going around employees' cars, so.
Any other comments, concerns?
Chairman?
Questions?
Just to add on to Chris's comment, I would be a fan and for, if we can make a condition to replace those trees when they're taken out.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. Do I hear a? No, we don't have to close the public hearing. Any comments from staff?
Just wanted to let you know that the farm marshal had no issue. He got back to me today.
Okay.
So that was blank in the memo.
Yep.
And in terms of a condition, you could add a site-specific number 10. And it would say something to the effect that three trees shall be provided to replace those being removed for the EV charging stations.
Okay.
If that sounds okay.
Works for me.
What was that again, Matt? Can you please repeat?
Three trees shall be provided to replace those being removed for the EV charging stations. Can I get that right?
Three shall be provided to replace those being removed.
Okay, the three of them, okay, that are shown there. And they're going to work with staff and?
Yeah, we'll find a suitable place to put them.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the site plan review.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1928, application for a site plan approval for a large ground-mounted solar array as an accessory use to an existing industrial use. 120 Post Road, Green Earth Roofing Solutions LLC applicant, PTR Precision Technologies, Inc., owner Laura Sukirka, applicant's representative, I-1 zone per the reference plans, reports, and application materials listed herein with the following modifications and conditions of approval. There will be an added condition, number 10, that the applicant will replace the three trees removed at the.
EV charging station.
Where the EV charging station, solar array is with like-kind trees. And that would be condition number 10 on the site specific, making a total conditions of 22.
Okay, I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, none. You want to call a roll?
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Kenneth Thalinski?
Four.
Vincent Guerillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
Patrick Hoopert?
Four.
And John Petronile is four.
Motion's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, folks, appreciate it very much.
Any other business to come before the board or commission, whatever we are? Applications to be received, is this the two that you gave us? Laurie?
Yes, sir. Slide's not going on. Can you hear me? Anyway, I'll talk loud. Public hearing 3089 558 and 566, Enfield Street, application for a special use permit for parking improvements per Section 9 and Section 9.10.7, American Legion Post number 80. Applicant, Town of Enfield and TM Realty owner, map 33, Lot 1 and 2, and R33 and BL Zone. That actually came in as a site plan review, and we had to change it because of its town property, so that's why you might be hearing it twice. It's now a public hearing.
Okay.
SPR 1931, 504 Hazard Avenue, which is an application for modification of previous site plan modification, 1866, for alterations to site for outdoor patio. Michael McManus, applicant, 504 Hazard Avenue, LLC owner, map 101, Lot 216, in the I-1 zone.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any unresolved issues?
Team 66, like A or something like that.
Through the chair to the staff. I remember in past, there was an issue on peerless way with the number one peerless. Has that been resolved? That they didn't have a CO or something?
The certificate of occupancies? No, it has not.
It's not, okay.
I'm sorry, is this on?
I hear you, yes.
Okay. The light's not going on, so I can't tell whether it's up or down.
Okay, so there's not been.
So there's been a lot of discussions among staff and leadership, so we're continuing to move forward.
Information only, I have no say over there anymore, so. Okay. We have no reason for an executive sanction, I don't believe.
Nope.
Okay, then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, stand up.